All right, we want to call our commission court order. We want to welcome all our guests, thank you all for coming. This time we'll have roll call or a call?
Here.
In and over.
Here.
Jerry Hendricks.
Here.
Roger Peel.
Here.
We have court. It's all standing pledge allegiance to the flag. Mr. Peel, will you leave this in a frame?
Salute, pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Our Father in heaven, we thank you for this, and the value you've given us, and we thank you for our many blessings and our abundance. Lord, this week, so in your meaning, I pray, Father, that anything accomplished here, Lord, will be in accordance with your word and your will. At these things, I ask in Christ's precious name, amen.
Amen. I have about three resolutions that I want to add, or you consider adding to new business, but I'm going to hold off till we get there. One is amateur radio, we forgot to put that on, and also a license, and also some sort of record to recognize the state of Matthew. So when we get there, I'll ask you to add those to new business. First person we have to speak today is Ms. Marcia Buskay, and Marcia and I are great way to speak together, she's a very smart lady, she's been the DHR director for how many years now?
I'm a director, but I've been a DHR like almost 34 years.
Thirty-four years, and she's come to speak with you.
I made a whole packet, just starting out a letter that I had around border dog, where I was asking if the commission could consider giving Clever DHR, it does say Clever County DHR, we are a state agency, but most of the county offices get some local money to help support their activities, and we haven't got any money for many years, and we have just run out of basically local funds for discretionary things, and we have for years used a non-regenerative fund that came out of some child support incentive interest money years ago until it was thrown out, that we cannot collect interest and keep that anymore, and we have just marginally spent that over the years. And we're about to make a change in our way we pay our vendors with local checks, and we're beginning to start training, the whole state's going to that, and they're asking the counties to provide their own, some of the supplies needed for the computer system to write the checks, to secure the checks. And it's the very bare bones, I did check around with a couple of small counties nearby, what their county commissions are giving, their county offices, and that range from like some of the small comparable sized counties, two, three thousand, some up to five thousand, and some of them are also adding splitting money, some that goes to administrative, and some that goes for like discretionary client fund for children and adults that we can use for something that falls through the policy cracks or anything else we can pay with our state money. So some have it split that way, but what I was asking at least for the time being was just to get us some supplies that we were to switch over to our payment system. What I attached behind there, just if anyone did not know, was the second page is just a list of all the umbrella programs that we have under our roof, and there are many things below those. And about the third page, I highlighted something that has a lot of numbers on it, and that, I specifically looked at the food assistance, which was, used to be called feed, it's big stamps, and you see the names, it's called SNAP sometimes, and the child support program, which Mr. Edwin was a little about, but some of this money, this is just a show here for a six month time frame, that's money that this Clever County office is distributing or collecting, and I know that there are like turnover factors, they say if you have money spent in the county, there may be six, depending on whose mathematical analysis you look at, six or seven times, that may turn over to the community if it's spent here. I would say the food stamp one more likely, I cannot guarantee that all of the child support collection, but we have one full-time worker, and somebody that helps sell maybe 25% of a workday, that collects over a million dollars a year in child support, and a lot of those programs have only one worker. But that's where I was looking at, like the economic impact, the work that's done is very efficient, and the next page is what a lot of people know is for, which is child abuse and adult, and we do those investigations, and I didn't sit down here, but like we are on call, what I saw with Chris on here, we are on call just like 24 hours, 365 days a year, we provide someone to go out, if the troopers or the sheriff's office, police or anyone need us, we provide that as well. And the green paper is something, if any of you have contacts of police who work somewhere, we're always recruiting foster parents, I know Lisa is one of our great foster parents, but we're always recruiting foster parents, and we're looking in the fallout of another class, if you have some, if this sign, or make copies, or if you need some more, because where they're at, there may be somebody that would see it, that where we're not there is something we need, but I just wanted to give that and overview about my request, and if you have any questions now, or at any time, my contact information is on there, if there's anything you want to ask right now, I'll be glad to try to do that.
I don't know a lot about this. Why aren't you looking to collect the child support?
Child support collection comes through section four of the Social Security Act. Back in the late 1960s, early 1970s, the federal government pushed down to local states and counties, the responsibility for those that apply for services to collect child support using the power of the state to do that. So the child support collection attorneys are actually special deputy assistant attorney generals, they have the power to collect that child support and the ability for those that don't pay to take away licenses and up to taking away their free booking to jail for paying their child support.
So a judge in a divorce case does this, gives the powers then?
Well, the judge in the divorce case, if it's a private case, then it's just between the parties, but if one of those parties then goes and applies for enforcement services through the department, then the department assists in collecting that money. It passes through the state, goes on the card custodial parent has, and we have those powers to make sure that the non-custodial parent continues to pay.
Any person can apply for child support assistance through us, you don't have to be of a certain income, you can make millions a dollar a year, and the most of it costs is $25 for an application, this is a service, everybody that gets child support doesn't get through us, but it is something we offer. And then some of the federal programs where I said the big stamp money that's going out and some of the other money, if you get assistance from some of those programs, you're required to also file for child support from the parents.
I never admitted any of this.
That's a program I was paid for by the federal funds.
Okay.
Jackson is one of our child support attorneys, salesman expert.
I've done it for 15 years.
Is there anything else?
Any questions?
I think so.
But you are asking to be considered in our upcoming budget?
Yes, I would love to be in the annual budget, but if you have the ability to give us some money soon, just so we can get, we're about to kick off the new payment system, so we can get the checks ordered, some of the staff are just going to train for that, the whole state's going to roll out starting tomorrow, just to train. We can use some of the paper checks we have, because it goes fully online, but we will need to order those, and if that can't be done now, then the poles have to try to find another way to see if they can order some initial starter checks.
On the funds that we have in discretionary money, can you have the use for that?
I think it would probably be.
And also, and also, and also, you know, the spending.
Right.
That's where it would need to come from, from that, to be able to support a public benefit. So, I don't think we can do it now, but I wouldn't mind putting some of my discretionary money towards it, less by my budget.
I'm sorry, my discretionary money.
Does everybody want to throw in a ticket, can we just get it done? Yeah, let's get it done.
I think we could possibly add that to you a little bit later. Meanwhile, supplies, can they go through us and get a better price, or not share?
The biggest one I would say is the check issue, which we've already done some, we've been talking on that, and I think they're the most specific company that we can get them from, because we have an internal ordering system as well, we buy massive amounts of certain things, toilet paper, towels, but checks.
Your stuff's off state business too? So most of your supplies comes off state business, so just Iowa's correct?
Yeah, we have a general warehouse, and it's an item on there, but there are things we need from time to time, like that is not on there, an office max, or something that we've had to try to just be creating, and some of it's by our own, so to try to get certain things for trains that's not on the warehouse list, yes.
All right. Y'all not considered that?
We're not considered that.
And, and the bottom possible. Thank you, Marcia. We have Ms. Yolanda Watkins with us, with Avenue Insurance in LA. How many years were you with ACCA?
Six.
Six, okay. Remember seeing you live.
I am Yolanda Watkins, and I'm with Avenue, in the city of Business Development Executive for Avenue, I've been with Avenue for seven, eighteen years next month, but from what I just alluded to, I was with the ACCA for six years, I was Son and Brad's real assistant, so it was funny working there, but it was a lot of fun. So I've been with half a county government, or local governments, over almost 24 years with Tax Administration, Revenue Enhancement Services. Just wanted to give you all an update concerning your sales tax, I put together some information for you all to look at. The first report that you show is a net comparison report, this is a very detailed report that shows month to month, year to year, how well your taxes are being collected. This is, this report right here encompass all of the taxes that we collect for Clever County, and as you can see, for the year 2021, sales taxes were up, well, all your taxes were up collectively by 28.83%, and which I think that was very good considering what we as a nation was going through. And as you can see currently for 2022, you are already up 26.47%, and we're just right here in May's time period, so, and I still think, you know, with inflation and all that we're going through even right now, that's still very good, that all your tax types are increasing. As we get money in, we go ahead and process it, we get money in on a daily basis, as you know, most taxes are due by the 20th of the month, so as we get money in, you receive that money two to three times per week from us, so that helps improve the cash flow. Another sheet that I put in there too, it relates back to your auditing, we also do audits on your behalf for the county, and audits don't just take place right here in Alabama, we go all throughout the United States to handle audits, and we send auditors that are closest to the area to handle that audit. As you can see, I ran this report from October 2019 to May 2022, we've resolved 171 audits on your behalf, the fees were $11,000, we discovered $31,172, and we collected $32,000 for you all. So your return on investment is $2.80. In our world, what that means for every dollar you spend with us, you're getting $2.80 back. We have to charge by hourly rate for audits, we can't do them based on contingency, that's against the law here in Alabama, but as you can see, the second part is audits that have been resolved, and you can see the breakdown of the top five, and it's also showing in the middle part, where the audits all take place, like I said, and it breaks down the number of audits we did in each state. One of the things, the next sheet that you all should have is also your fee comparison, compared, comparing us to the Department of Revenue. As you can see from that fee comparison, we're a state county, almost $22,000 in administration fees. We currently collect for 48 of the 67 counties here in Alabama, as well as 236 within the state of Alabama. We are an Alabama-based company, our home office is in Birmingham, and we pride ourselves on local governments. I know one of the questions was concerning compliance and how we handle taxpayers and all of that. As I said, taxes are due on the 20th of the month, and I put a compliance guide in that packet as well, so on the 21st day of the month, we are calling taxpayers, we're sending out warning cards, and by the taxpayer bill of rights, we have to contact them like 30, 60, 90 days before we send them over to our auditing department. So they get multiple contact from us as far as what's owed, why they're past due, we try to put those up as much as possible. Ms. Lisa has access to our online reporting pool, which houses about, now it's probably about 16 different reports that are available online, we can give her access, my friend, she has access to a delinquency report that shows who's delinquent 30, 60, 90 days, so she can keep track of that as well. And I can answer any questions that you all might have, I know that there was one taxpayer that was mentioned, which I can't mention the name in this situation, but in research, that taxpayer was filing actually under the wrong tax type, and we've tried multiple times trying to get in contact with that taxpayer, but unsuccessful as of yet, so if I reach out to you tomorrow and try to get a number for that, for that person, that's why they were receiving delinquency reports, because they were filing under the wrong tax type. And by state law, the way the tax forms come in, or how they were meant online, is how we have to process the payment, we cannot doctor any kind of forms that come in with sales tax on it, so I can answer any questions you all might have. My card is in there too, so if y'all have any questions after that, feel free to call me, email me, whatever you want.
Any questions? I mean, I know we can't say names, but it's 205, four or five years ago, we had EC, and that's the names that we refer to. Convenience store out there, I think you may, we're not naming names, but anyway, I mean, y'all weren't very cooperative, y'all didn't really help us collect that money, our county magistrate are actually one collecting the money, so what kind of enforcement do y'all have as far as collecting, other than just calling them up, say you owe them?
Well, what we do also is we have, we can put links on properties as well, and we do try to get the county involved, if we're not getting assistance from that taxpayer or they're not paying, we try to do get the county involved, because sometimes it might just take a letter from the attorney, or whomever it might be at that time, but we do, because it's your money, we want you to get it as quickly as possible, so we did go to probably extreme of sending out letters, making phone calls, probably putting a lien in place, but sometimes some people are just not going to pay. And that's the reason I like to keep the cities or the counties involved, because it is your revenue, and we do try, because on the city level, they have the ability to pull a business license, if that business is in business and they're purchasing a business license, they can ring before city council, or if the county has a county license, you all can ring before council or commission and pull their business license, you have that right, you can take them to court as well immediately. So we try to do as much as we can, but we can put liens in place, and then we're also starting to do injunctions as well.
At what point did you know by us that somebody's not paying, is it at the end of the first 30 days, or the end of the 90 days, or?
Well, Ms. Lisa can pull the delinquency report, and I guess what you could start doing is doing like an executive work session and going through the list, and like I said, this is sort of 30, 60, 90, and you can see who's 30 days, like who's 90 days, like, now I wouldn't focus too much on the 30 days, like, because it could have been something missed in the mail by there or something like that, I would focus more on the 90 and 120 days.
You charge the late fee?
We do, we do charge late fees, they're late after midnight on the 20th, so at 12:01 they're assessed like a $50 late fee, and I think it's a percentage of whatever the state code is.
Do we get a percentage of that money?
Oh, you get all the late fee. Yes, we just get our basic 276, that's it, everything else comes to you all. So whatever your late fee is, that's assessed at 12:01.
I'm glad you came.
Yeah, if they're paying it through to MIAT, how is the communication between the state and you guys?
We import a document from the MAC, from the OneSpox system, so we import that document, it goes into our bank account, because we bank at the same bank as MAC system, which is Wells Fargo, and we just reconcile the payments to what we imported from that system. So if they file through the MAC system on the 20th, they're late at 4 o'clock, whereas with us, they're, we give them at least a 12:01, or 12 o'clock to pay.
But y'all are able to look and see that they're paying?
And that's, that's what happens with this, with that particular taxpayer, they were filing through the MAC system, which they can't file that tax type through the MAC system, they have to send in a paper form. Yeah, you can't file district fees under, under the MAC system.
And so that money gets paid in like that, comes, feeds into your account, or sends to our account?
Yes.
So it's, it's, even though it's been sent to the state or to the other organization, what you're saying, they're tied together?
Right.
So when the money goes in there, it goes over into their account, which then?
Yeah, we just reconcile everything, and then you need to say that.
You see, she reconciles theirs and ours.
That was my question.
Yeah, our account is a non-interest bearing account at all, so we don't bear any interest or anything, earn any interest off any of the money that we put up.
It's just a document, it's not a.
Right, it's just a document, and if we can get some help, like I said, you would have thought.
I guess, I guess the reason I'm saying that is because I've called the office numerous times, and it has been put on hold for like 45 minutes since I opened my business, and it is a nightmare to get you guys.
Right, and you know, right now, there's Harry shortages, staff shortages, phone wait times, and I, call me, I don't learn if you call me.
I've had mine directed to MIAT. I do it online, because I didn't want big lady, so it was the easiest and simple, and then when I tried to get set up with you guys, it's still not there.
Yeah, just call me.
So the one thing that's in question, not calling names, are you saying that we might need to reach out to them and say, this is the way you need to be filing?
Right, or give us a number, and we'll try.
So would you say we get you the number?
Give us a number, you would have thought that if.
He paid yours now.
Oh, yeah.
So we're going after the one that we.
No, they're submitting through the MAC system, is what I've been told, but they're submitting sales tax rather than other taxes, which is.
Because they're just a mistake, okay.
When you got the company's information, do you have a business license number on that information?
I don't think, I can check, I can really check.
Usually you just have to put your federal ID.
Oh, your social security number.
Yeah, or your, there's nothing more for the business license.
Right.
It's a taxpayer ID.
Yeah.
It's a taxpayer ID.
So we have a business license collection issue also, like probably every county does.
Do y'all have a separate, because I know it's only like eight cities, eight counties that have a separate business license from the state, is yours a separate?
Or just county and state.
Okay, so yeah.
It is two different licenses.
Yes, so yeah.
State can see in the during.
So like, let me use this instance, like for, for Macon County, they have a, Macon County, in Macon County, you gotta get a county license, a state license, and whatever city license that you're in, so you're getting three, but with you all.
It's just two.
It's just the two, so your state runs, so yeah, you're just collecting the business license for the state and get a portion of that for this one. Right.
So then we don't have that kind of license, but every business has that state license, because it's the same?
They're one and the same with you.
That's what she just said.
Yeah, because there are only eight, I want to say, it might be six or eight, I'm not for sure, but it's six or eight counties that have a separate license where you must get a county license, a state license, and whatever city that you're in.
See, that's, that's recently been a problem with some of our city, they thought that since they had a city license, that they didn't have to have a county state license.
Right, and they did.
No, they didn't, that's what we're trying to get over to.
And I know some of the counties may complain because they only get a certain small, it's only like a couple of dollars that y'all get for handling the state license, so.
Does Avenue do collections from county state?
We don't.
There's cities, I know.
Right, we do city, we collect for cities, but we can't, we, the state won't let us play in their field, on that part.
Well, I appreciate this, but this has been a while for me for sure.
But please feel free to contact me, or Audrey, or email me, or call my cell number, if you have a taxpayer that's having problems, I talk to taxpayers too all the time and try to get issues resolved, because I'm big on customer service, that's what I'm here for, and that's what I like.
It's just been hard to, you call, and they put you on hold, and they'll tell you, you know, it's a big time at night, and when you try to go to business.
It's hard, I understand, because you know, I hate those systems that you press one, press two, press three, and you sit there, I've been on hold for two hours, one half or something, and I just like forget. But we're trying to make it easy and efficient for the citizens of Clever County, and all the citizens of Alabama as best as we can, so, any other questions?
Thank you for coming, for me.
And I know y'all have two contracts that's coming up for renewal, I think.
Fireworks and logging.
Yeah, fireworks and logging, so we hope you all consider.
And if anyone, if like a business needs to be audited, and they're audited, and there's funding there, then they're responsible to pay for that audit, right?
Well, no, the.
It's the audit.
The state system is not, well, it's not set up that way, that money comes from, the county actually paid for that, I know it's been talk about some counties or in Alabama that they can pass on that cost to the auditor, I don't know where that is, maybe a good question for Southern Bradsville, the bloodhound, but yeah, the counties pay, the counties and the cities pay for the audits.
But I thought if there was a funding.
And they reverse that money.
And then they, it would go back to that business owner would have to pay.
I don't know if that's in the state statute at all relating to that, that's something to look into, but I don't think it's that way.
I think we, we did in the past, and I imagine you know, we did, asterisk audits, and it, and it benefited us.
Right, yeah, you can always request audits, because the way our audit process works is you can request audits, or we're looking at the taxpayers and what they're remaining, and we're looking at that information, and that, you know, sends up a red flag, we're going to do an audit on them, and then while we're in there, we're looking at all the vendors, and that might signal another audit as well, but as I said, your audit returns are really good right now.
Yeah, if they get all, it was just like the city, of course, is the audit, and find the funding. Yeah, if they get all, it was just like the city, of course, it's an audit and a fine, a fine. And they have not paid their taxes.
Right.
And so you, you find that fine, do the counties still get their portion even though?
Yes, uh, as long as we're um, because the way our audits work is, as long as we're the tax administration for that city or county, we're gonna grab everybody's money at that one particular time to make it easier on that taxpayer. So um, like the big box stores, we're gonna audit them every three years, so we're gonna grab everybody. And um, so everything is, so we're always billing you for the amount of time that we're looking for Cleveland County's money. So you're not responsible for that whole entire bill. So if we're just there for a half an hour, you're just getting charged half that rate. And then um, expenses are equally divided by everyone that's included in the audit. So if it's all two hundred and thirty-five clients and the forty-eight counties, everybody's gonna get that equal share of expenses. So, and there is a, I mean, there's an audit detail report online that she has access to. They list out all the audits that have been processed, how many have been resolved, the amount we collected, everything. We probably got more information out there than what you think, what you wanna know.
I like the way we asked about last time.
Yes, we asked, we did, we asked a lot for my, we used to give it up.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you so much.
Okay, you're welcome.
You're welcome to say the whole meeting if you want.
Yeah.
I think I might say ahead on that to my girlfriend.
Well, the sun starts down at the, at the river, I see. So.
Next, we got officer, I mean, Sheriff Dennis Green and John Daniel, Sheriff of Lake, to come up and speak to us.
Sure.
You just gonna let John do it?
Thank you all.
Thank you. We've had a couple meetings in the past, one or so, with the superintendent. And they've come to us about helping fund a school resource officer. Uh, so we've came up with a proposal. There's actually two proposals in that handout. Uh, this proposal, one plan to find potential for the future partnership with the Board of Education, Sheriff's Office, Heath and Police Department, and Ramburn PD, provide certified resource officers at the, all the county school campuses. The sole purpose of this initiative is to provide safety to the students, faculty, that's true to county school system. Consider the increased safety and vulnerability of the school system across the United States. History has shown that law enforcement presence in schools has secured crime and violence against our youth. Uh, the following proposals defines the plan of action between the county school board and the sheriff's office for the following schools, which is the Career Technical School, Pleasant Grove, which is down in Hollis, and then of course, Freehurst Elementary. Uh, if funded, uh, this will provide full-time resource officers for enlisted schools for a schedule of a hundred and seventy days. Uh, outside the schedule of a hundred and seventy days, the SRO, which is School Resource Officer, will perform regular law enforcement duties in the county, you know, in reference, uh, trash detail, picking up trash on the roads, uh, courthouse security, uh, civil process server, uh, point process server, uh, dental control, investigation. Uh, we actually met this morning, and Heathling is on board to go ahead, and Ramburn is also on board to go ahead. Ramburn, of course, I handle Ramburn's school, Heathling will handle Heathling's school. And then the county would be responsible for Freehurst, uh, the three there, Freehurst, Pleasant Grove, and uh, the Career Technical School. Uh, the first proposal, uh, those figures, uh, that is with new vehicles. Uh, then the, the, the requested amount for the commission, uh, first year, of course, two hundred and three thousand, one hundred and ten dollars, seventeen cents. After the first initial cost, of course, we would have to buy equipment, cars, and et cetera. Uh, but then, year two and beyond, would be seven seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventeen cents. Um, the school board has also said they would provide twenty thousand dollars per school for overtime, uh, for that officer also. So that would be an initial for us, would be sixty thousand dollars. Uh, the second proposal was pretty much the same thing, except, uh, it's used vehicles. If we could find used vehicles, what if we had to get a little auditor and check legality about how we could purchase the, the used vehicles as an option?
So you're suggesting that the vehicle, we have a vehicle for each school?
Well, I mean, if, if we had three officers, then we would have to have three vehicles.
Just for them to go from their home to the school?
Yeah. Well, if, I mean, they're certified officer, uh, if, I mean, they could, if they're not doing uh, school resource stuff, then of course they're gonna be working as a deputy, uh, doing other, I mean, could be picking up trash, or answering calls, burning papers, it'd be a number of different things, so. I, I mean, I would say if they're certified officer, they'd be the, the vehicle.
And, sorry to interject here, John, I want to mention that, that superintendent, for, for just the county, it'd be three officers, so they're, they're looking at the trade school, plus the Freehurst. But they're gonna pay sixty-nine thousand, twenty-three per.
Mm-hmm.
Per deputy. And then they have a budget, like I said, of overtime.
No, 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 that's sixty-nine thousand, that was for all three.
For all three, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It was like, I think it was around twenty-three thousand, uh, per, per officer, per resource officer for daily one paid.
Did that include twenty thousand overtime?
No, that, the, the twenty thousand overtime is extra.
So that's what they want me to work ballgames?
Yeah. Well, you know, of course, they don't go to a lot of basketball games much, but if, say if they play a game they might have problems out of, they call it, hey, we need extra controls, so we can send them to the ballgame for, yeah, whatever.
So the, the first year is, is a hundred and sixty-four thousand?
That's proposal two, yeah. Yes. Yeah, that would be if we could get used cars.
Y'all, y'all just cars are easy.
That's what I'm saying about it.
Could, could you not just pass down some you already got?
Well, it's not like we don't have any.
But what he's saying is, is you take the new one here.
That's what we was gonna do. Yeah. Yeah, we was gonna put the new ones on the road and use the ones for, all used for sale, yeah.
That's a good idea.
Do you know if the school has planned to implement any new procedures other than these three officers?
I mean, other than the three officers, I mean, I, we've been to the school, I mean, they're about as safe as any school could get.
I know.
Other than, you know, having a resource officer, I mean.
Yeah, it's hard to even get into the school, but you know, you got the playgrounds wide open, it's got sections of fence, but. And then what gates are there standing wide open, anybody can travel through the backside.
Yeah.
That's no different than my doors propped open, just to go to their car and see what happens, so.
Well, I recommended several years ago that they put walk-through metal detectors.
Yeah.
And leave one door, access door, and keep everything else locked, you know, but.
If you go to those schools, you'll see, even, you know, taking out the trash and stuff, and you got, you know, because I volunteered over there, you got all this trash, you're going out the door, and what happened is, they'll put that kicker down. Now, I think they removed them at one time.
I mean, if they have any.
Yeah, because, because it's standing there in the door building for an hour, two hours, because of so much trash and stuff. It's going through that side door, it's a little interesting.
So in a second year and beyond.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you're saying a hundred thousand dollars with the twenty-three that the school's gonna give in seventy-seven, seventy-eight years. Is that gonna cover benefits and services and everything?
I thought anyway, and, and that annual salary, that is benefits and everything, uh, that, that is what three, three officers does. Benefits and everything, a hundred and forty-four thousand, that, that is the.
For that, for those three, I see.
Yeah, yeah. Now, that is a certified, that ain't like bottom paid. So that, that will be a certified officer step of.
Bottoming out at the corner.
Yeah.
Okay, I have my fingers. Hundred and forty-four, exactly the twenty-three from the school. And then our portion would be the seventy-eight.
Half of the same, yeah, for three.
Who? Would all these costs fall under you or the, the dues or costs?
The, the three for the county would fall under the sheriff's office. The Ramburn would fall under Ramburn, and then Heathling would fall under Heathling.
Well, it's a shame that we have to spend money that way, but that's the world we live in.
Right, and we was talking about that this morning, you know, this, this.
And you'd be surprised how deep conversations get at the school with our teachers and with our principals, that they don't deserve to be talked to like that. But I feel a lot better than the police officers are to step up and say, hey, that's getting way out there.
Right.
There's a lot, I mean, there's been times, there's been some hard feelings at the school. I think it's, I think, I think it's something that's just coming, that we, what we gotta deal with.
Um, I, I forgot that on there, that sixty-nine thousand, uh, he was basing that on eighteen dollars an hour. Uh, of course, I mean, we didn't do that. Uh, because that'd be making more than our roadhead, which, you know, of course, we'd have to start them out on the, you know, pace together with it, with it back in April. And that's where that, uh, the one forty-four, I mean, so, but his sixty-nine thousand is based off eighteen dollars an hour.
But what would we, what would you think, so that's gonna be less than the.
Correct, yeah.
So.
I think we, I think when I called anyway, we start out at like sixteen forty-something.
That's right.
Then after the six month, of course, the dollar rate has a rescue, and it's like seventeen forty, I wanna say seventeen forty-six.
Pretty close to eighteen then, they come out with a pretty good number. Okay.
And they will find out the regular work schedule. If they're not in school, they'll be on the road, right?
Yes, that's, yeah.
The school, I'm reading here.
Yeah. And it, it's a Monday through Friday, uh, eighty hours. But, but like, when they're not in school, I mean, they, I mean, if we had somebody out, they might have to work a weekend or, or whatever, you know. So, but we try to keep them at the same, Monday through Friday.
And I guess they, they could, their Christmas holidays and that time, they, they can actually work for the county. I mean, they, they work for the county to take care of other things, and in the summer, they have, a lot, you'd have a lot of winter so.
Right. And that's our big, you know, most of our summer's pretty busy for the sheriff's office, so.
Um, so I know he presented this to us, did you guys have a deadline on it?
The superintendent did, he was pushing for all this forward from sixty dollars. Uh, I mean, everybody, I mean, you know, we like to have it too, but I know it's impossible to go further, there's no way. Uh, we did have it all this forward, but at least showed that, you know, we're trying, that is what they're asking.
So we'll pass our budget at least by, what, end of September? Give y'all a chance to all digest this and think about it.
Give us a chance to digest our budget.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Y'all have any other questions for the sheriff's department?
So the board of education's paying twenty-three thousand dollars?
No, they're, they're doing sixty-nine thousand. And then they're paying on top of that, they're paying an extra sixty thousand for overtime.
And then the three municipalities just pay in.
They're, they're paying for theirs, yeah.
Those two, so you only got the two that's out of the county, but.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, they don't have nothing to do with the sheriff of the other two, it would just be the three.
All right. Did y'all have any other questions for the sheriff, for, for John? I know there was something coming up about, you guys had a question about, um, servicing vehicles. Y'all wanna ask it?
To let you know what's been going on, years, uh, years ago with the orders, I mean, we have to deal with the orders. And a lot of times, you know, we try and use mostly local businesses here in town. But anytime that the county as a whole spends over fifteen thousand dollars, and we're gonna get roped up this year, that's, I mean, that's a given. But once we get roped up, we've got, we're, we're in the process of putting together another package to put it out. And it'll probably be just for your department. And uh, and we're looking at doing like a twenty mile radius. I think I brought it into like nineteen the other day, and we talked about it, something like that, thirteen or nineteen mile radius, that we can get people that will, uh, put it, you know, put, put it out for bids. And what will happen to that is whoever gets that bid, your vehicle will only be serviced there going forward. Uh, you know, unless, you know, if it's just something simple, as an oil change or a headlight or something, or, or. I'm hoping to put together a policy that I'm working on, and Lisa had a little bit of trouble this week, I want to get to him on. Where every county vehicles are assigned to somebody, and it's gotta go at least, because I mean, I've looked at vehicles where the reservoirs, the water in reservoirs are empty. And uh, I mean, just little things that, uh, and we're taking it and having them serviced. Like one, I'm not gonna call the name where the service is at, but it had just been serviced. I go out there and the windshield wiper filler is empty, and I, I was wagging my bar, servicing the vehicle myself, and, and most of these bills, it comes in a good bit of bill. And in fact, radio reservoirs empty. And I got, when I sat in the car and cranked it up, uh, I was like, wow, you know, when I get out and I turn the car off, and you gotta wait for, you fill your reservoir, you wait for it to suck the water back down in there, well, that needle, I mean, somewhere that we gotta come up with a program that will benefit sheriff's department, all the departments, whether whoever we're gonna take the cars to be serviced. And it also says, I think, listen, if I'm not right, let's say if it's a transmission that has to be replaced. Well, whoever gets that contract can justify a ten percent markup to send it to a, uh, to whoever they suggest to send it to.
You don't have to do that.
So, uh, but, uh, but what we're under pressure is not that we don't wanna, you know, bill local whatever, is, is we're not gonna be written up. If we're getting rid of this time, there's gonna be a finding on our audits, and usually we have, we've ever had. And you know what, maybe that we've had?
Yes.
Since I'm there, I'll solve them today.
But this is gonna be one, so it's something that we're gonna have to address going forward. And we tried to address it before, and uh, and then I know, uh, Lee has come up with, you know, servicing vehicles. But I think, you know, like with your brakes and stuff like that, uh, you know, I, I think we'll just, I think we're gonna put something together. I'm just giving you something up because now we know we're gonna have a finding on it. But we gotta have something in place going forward to make sure it's right.
We.
We gotta correct it, we gotta correct it.
We need you or you assign somebody to come up here and sit down with the state, which y'all want, because it's, it's just for y'all. So if, if you can get somebody to do that.
How soon?
It really needs to be pretty soon, because we're fixing to start our audit. And if, we wanna have some little something to say, hey, this is, we're correcting the problem, yeah.
And even if it's not in place for this fiscal year, which obviously by the time we get everything out, it's gonna be pushing to do anything with it this year. At least we will, we will have shown that we may be attempting to correct the situation to our examiners. If that looks somewhat more favorable, we're starting to get the.
Sure, when y'all buy, y'all buy a tire, y'all buy a, how's the tire buying?
I know.
Yes, sheriff buys them, and then we usually take them out and mount it. Uh, is there an issue? Because you have a, you bought all the, all that equipment, right?
Yeah, we have a tire out of here.
So are you, so is there an issue with mounting?
We're mount, we're mounting our own right now.
Okay, but you're not mounting any of the other departments?
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay, but you're set up to this, so. But one of the things is, I think too, is, is, you know, it's like some, I was, I'm just looking at the lady thinking, why? You know, and then I'm thinking to myself, at my house, I'm the one who checks those things. And I, and I, what I want is, is something put in the vehicles, whoever services the vehicle, that they need to sign off.
And I, and I, what I want is, is a, is something put in the vehicles, whoever services the vehicle, that they need to sign off on this, because a lot of times, I mean, you get on there, we change the oil, and we wipe. Change the oil, we get paid, we pay a, we get the invoice for it, and it comes out of your budget. I want something tied to that that says, I checked the reservoir here, 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 and I looked at the brakes to make sure the brakes is not fixed, you know, that would be safer down the road, you look at, you change, just change the oil, and you get that, and stuff gets on your windshield, you, you know, and your reservoir on your motor's running hot, because it, and so that will put a date to that ticket that says, we checked that reservoir. And then sometimes they might need a little bit, at least if you know then, you look there and you go back in, and that reservoir's empty again, you know you got a leak somewhere. Instead of fixing the water holes, or we fixing a pinhole somewhere, which you know what to tell me to carry, then it winds up being a thirty-seven, or seven, eight thousand dollar motor nowadays. So that's what we're trying to do, is to do so, prevent and stuff, and we take it to whoever's gonna be offering, servicing these vehicles, that we have a twenty-nine or thirty-nine point check on the whole vehicle from the taillights to the front. And, uh, so that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to get together for all of the vehicles, and his department, your department, and everybody else's department. But some of the ladies, you know, they will get in the car, not just same ladies, I got men in the same way, that don't check until the light comes on. But if we're having service, like, then most of our county vehicles are being serviced. So, uh, that's something I think we just need to come up.
There is a resolution on the table tonight, so that, that concerns that being, and the reason it's on there is to be able to give the auditor at least something that we try to put in place. For.
For correct.
That, that we're trying to correct, they do correct the back. So there is, there is one on there that we'll talk about the sheriff's department.
Hey, let me ask you something, is there any reason that lead's folks cannot service your vehicle? Anything that's not under warranty, I'm.
That's a sheriff question there. That's a sheriff question, I mean, that.
Yeah. Yeah, my question was, uh, can't certify. There'll be a, it's a big liability to work on these vehicles, we drive. Because something out, out definitely get killed, and, uh, you don't know who's going, who's going in soon. But we gotta certify mechanics, let me say, yeah, they certified, and they checked, they did work on them. It's like this wreck we had down here when I went down, the guy just had, supposedly put brakes on the dump truck. But then, it wasn't certified mechanic, but that guy got killed, you know?
Will we take all this into consideration and?
Well, that's, and that's, and that's what we're gonna, we're gonna do, and is put it into a wheel well of who's gonna be certifying your vehicle. Y'all's, y'all's vehicle is totally different than any vehicle in the county, because there's a time that y'all are in pursuit.
Yeah.
And, uh, and I don't want a wheel running off your car, and, uh, and I understand that, that's the reason why whoever, that's the reason why I want also a checklist that goes with that car that'll be in that file, because this is what the certification law will be so turned into the county commission, when it comes in with our invoice, and then we'll put it in that file, and if something happens, then that texts us that we know that we already get an inspection, but certain areas can't, right?
Um, when you turn in, should we send notebooks out soon, right? Will you include all this in your stuff for the way so that we can be considered?
Right.
If you'll do that, that'll be helpful, thank you for coming, and then, and then, and then we talked about too, with getting one of these two ladies to talk about the, uh, possibly bidding that out if we go forward. So we just, if we can work with y'all on that, and try to make sure that you guys are safe, but also protect our.
My problem, my problem was, number six.
Yeah.
I don't wanna lose the paperwork.
Let me ask you paperwork, okay?
December public hearing, it's a public hearing, I don't, so it's ahead of your agenda on the court.
Did y'all have any questions?
Just listed there, it's not, it's not a resolution.
Is the value there?
Resolutions are been passed.
Large.
Because resolutions are passed, it's just a, I don't know, I don't know, here.
Right now, we have no bid openings, no awards or protections. Uh, we have scheduled, um, public hearings for vacation of County Road Two-Ninety, is there anyone here that would like to speak, um, concerning that, uh, closing, the vacation of County Road Two-Nine?
I will, I will say that I have talked to one of the property owners, the reeds that owns property back, um, they, the plan, I've been here tonight, but said they, said they wouldn't be able to make it, they are on board with, with their closure, I think they have, uh, are working on some agreements, on some easements to give back to their property, but they, they were good with the, love and closure.
Our own landowners, or do you?
Yes.
Um, but these are good friends, perhaps, and part of head office, uh, I had already talked to them, and so we're all good, you know, we're.
There's just simply nothing good that comes off that, I mean, they're, they're using, I mean, people are using it as a land fee, and most people are scared to go down there, because they don't know what they're gonna encounter, that that reeds is never gonna be replaced, and there's just simply no, nothing good that's gonna come, come from that.
So it is noted that we had a public hearing, and no one comes up against it, closing. Consent agenda.
So we would do that for next one?
Well, yeah, so I think you could, at this point, you make the motion to.
Make motion, yeah, we'll proceed to go give a close that portion of the right.
I second it.
Now, was this all any of our new business or old business?
We just follow along, public hearing.
Okay. So the motion is to vacate County Road Two-Ninety and that.
This, you mean regional script?
Yes, okay.
Maybe, maybe regional script. Uh, please be advised that the Cleveland County Commission against the vacated County Road Two-Nine, County Road Two-Nine shall be vacated from the intersection of County Road Forty-Nine East across from forty-nine hundred feet or zero point nine three miles to the Talalooa River. Purchases this hearing, so all of you citizens are eligible to be affected by the proposed vacation, by the way objection, or request for the early, early years.
Okay, and so you made the initial motion, I, I, you second, any discussion? All in favor, say a aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, you understand? So vacate Two-Nine, and your description, according to your description, is vacated, and you'll, we'll write that up, and we'll get that.
And I will have to add that it's been fourteen days before it goes into vacating, I'll be tolerated it up.
Right, we'll get it recorded in our office. Okay. All right, consent agenda, I, I, I don't know, I, I, did everything get initial?
Yes.
Everything was initial? All in.
Make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Owens makes a motion, and this Cobb makes a second, kind of a consent agenda. Did that have any D H R person on there?
I didn't have a good off the hair on the door, it's on, but I did have your scanner, so.
Sheriff's scanner.
Scan. Which I'm actually, I think, will come.
Okay. All in favor, say a aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. New business, materials and county storage is an item A. Whereas the Cleveland County Commission has materials and storage in several locations that are no longer useful due to being damaged or obsolete. Whereas county storage areas have become overcrowded and need to be cleared out, whereas the materials and storage have been placed there by all departments, therefore, the Cleveland County Commission requests that each department had complete made disposal of equipment, form and return it within ninety days.
I make the motion.
I second it.
Mr. Owens make the motion, this Cobb makes the second, any discussion?
Well, that's just one, that's really, I brought it up today, but we have been down this road where I, I contacted this one, I contacted that one, we're still talking about the same stuff, and it's stacked up for two years. So I think, uh, we need to, uh, identify these thoughts as we get into the ninety days, uh, we don't mind getting some manpower, the sheriff's been good enough to, with dealing with COVID and everything, for now, uh, we got access to some help to move some of this stuff out, so, uh, it's, you know, we need to move while we got the hell.
I'll make sure these departments get these, uh, disposal forms.
And we'll be able to work with, what I'm saying, if they just schedule it with us.
All in favor, say a aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Resolution for the expenditure of American Rescue Plan Act funds for government services, whereas Cleveland County, Alabama, has received American Rescue Plan Act fiscal recovery funds. And is charged with ensuring that such funds are expended in accordance with state and federal law, and whereas under the final rule published by the United States Department of Treasury, dated January sixth, twenty thousand twenty-two, the county had the option to designate a standard allowance of up to ten, no, yeah, ten. Ten million of its ARPA funds, not to exceed the county total ARPA funds awards of two million eight hundred ninety-six thousand and ninety-three dollars as revenue replacement. And whereas, the final rule provides that the designation of this standard allowance is a one-time irrevocable election, and that must be made for the period of performance of the ARPA funds awards, and whereas the county has duly made this election and designated its entire ARPA funds awards as revenue replacement funds. And whereas the county makes then revenue replacement funds for government services, and whereas the Cleveland County Commission has determined there's a need to ensure the provision of emergency response services in all areas of the county, and in particular, to ensure adequate emergency response transport services to citizens and others assessing the county recreation, high school, flying, and areas, including areas located in Chihaw State Park and Talalooa National Forest. Whereas the Cleveland County Hospital Board, a non-profit public corporation doing business as the Cleveland County University. Medical Services has received a grant award to fund the purchase of an additional emergency response transport vehicle capable of assessing these areas of the county, and whereas the C C E M S has acquired this vehicle. Whereas the vehicle is equipped to assess, to assess these areas and to treat and transfer individuals in these areas in need of emergency assistance, but is not equipped with equipment reasonably needed to fully respond to cardiac arrest emergencies, and to monitor and transmit cardiac activity information to healthcare professionals located in emergency healthcare treatment facilities. Whereas the county wishes to use ARPA revenue replacement funds to acquire this equipment and to enter into an agreement with the Cleveland County EMS to use this equipment to carry out projects, a project on behalf of the county to provide emergency response services to its citizens and other visitors of the county seen in a road areas. Whereas the commission recognizes that using ARPA revenue replacement funds to equip Cleveland County EMS to carry out this project on behalf of the county will provide a direct benefit to significant portions of the, the citizens of the county by facilitating the delivery of these services. And whereas the commission has further determined that pursuant to Article Three, Section forty-three point zero-two of the Constitution of Alabama of nineteen oh one, it is within the authority of the county to provide these services. And whereas the county, the commission has determined that providing these services necessary, reasonable, and proportionate measures to facilitate provision of these government services, now therefore be resolved by the commission as follows. The county shall conditionally allocate up to fifty-five thousand of its ARPA revenue replacement funds to facilitate the provision of the government services described herein. The final allocation and distribution of these funds are contingent upon the following, the execution of a subwar, subaward agreement with the Cleveland County EMS prior to the purchase of the equipment described herein, setting forth the terms and conditions of the use of the equipment to provide emergency response services on behalf of the county. And the procurement of the equipment in accordance with procurement requirements applicable to the use of federal awards. Following the distribution of the equipment, its continued, its continued use by the Cleveland County EMS shall be contingent upon compliance with the terms of the subaward agreement. Expenditure of revenue replacement funds is authorized by this resolution as further conditional on the continued appropriation and availability of ARPA revenue replacement funds for this purpose, and in no event shall be used for the any expenses not obligated by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, and expended by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
I second.
This Cobb makes motions, Owens second, any questions, discussion?
Hold on. No word here says what we're coming.
It's a, a latest device.
It's got to be in here, I think.
I think the cardiac, I think with that not described, it's the cardiac.
It's sufficiently specifically described.
Yeah. You have the actual details specs and everything, the I C's already.
But she also, she also said that it gone to the commission, and then the one with the commission, now at any time, we're responsible for it. So, I mean, we're not just giving them fifty-five thousand dollars, we give them whatever this specific piece of equipment costs, and then it goes into the commission anyway, it, it don't make this cloud out anymore, huh?
This is what they sent you, this is, they said this is what satisfactory, and this is what y'all paying them, yeah.
And you come with it?
Well, it needs to be specifically listed on our inventory ones we purchased it, and then it should be hand-received to the agency that's gonna be using it, but at that point, I don't feel comfortable. But preparing these resolutions so that they are in accordance with the ARPA language and all the regulatory guidance, that's what you're paying the I C for.
And when they, when they get their starting order agreement, and they get further into the paperwork process of this whole thing, they're unsure there'll be more details right out of that point, this is the initiating the acceptance of it. There are many, this is just first step, and, uh, several steps.
So this is.
This is the program of money, first step.
Right, so program is, is the commissioner program that they're good with spending some of their ARPA money for this project. And that's what she was wanting, yeah.
The equipment recently has fully responded to a cardiac arrest emergency, and to monitor and to transmit cardioactivity information to healthcare professionals located in emergency healthcare treatment facilities, and I imagine there's three or four different devices that would.
They're saying there are, but they're also saying it's not, it's not, that's, that's something that Tracy and her's gotta work out, because you, you, she was saying that she knew of something out there, so hopefully her and Tracy get together on what will be compatible. But, but it, it's, it's probably gonna be the lowest price, so it might be the one he's picking out's gonna be the lowest price, I don't know. But this is the amount of money that we're gonna be awarding this much money, that's one thing for sure.
Okay, so we buy it, stick it in the ambulance, the ambulance gets cold, burns, whatever, we're responsible if we go and get that, whatever it is.
Well, I think that's the way with a lot of equipment, and all of, that we've got all over the county, that we issue to the fire departments, that issue different area, we're still responsible.
But it's spelled out.
But when it comes down to it, I'm sure that we have an inventory list.
This is simply a part of the funds. You have not bought that yet, and this does not authorize your purchase, this authorizes earmarking the funds for that purchase, and then there will be a bid, an acceptance, and a purchase.
Ready to vote, any other discussion?
Yeah.
All in favor, say a aye?
Aye.
You oppose, okay, the ayes, three ayes, have it. You got that one, uh, anyone right? So we're, uh, we're exceeding, all right?
Can I make one comment?
Yes.
Extra resolutions are identical, other than the name of the county road, I don't know if you need to read each one, they're not separately, but they are exactly the same except for the name of the county road, because it's initiating the process of using ARPA funds for dirt projects. because it's initiating the process of using ARPA funds for their projects. Just, this is a matter.
So C and D. So if I read all of this and say this with, uh, we, we vote for each item separately, right? But I could read it both as an explanation.
If you read item C and describe county road three, and then someone makes a motion to waive the reading for item D and just refer to it as the same specific resolution for county road thirty-five, okay? Then that, that reading could be waived.
Alright. Thank you. I like reading.
Yeah.
Usually it's a calendar, but I mean. Whereas, uh, this is resolution for expenditures of American Rescue Plan Act funds for government services in county road three. Whereas Cleveland County, Alabama, has received American Rescue Plan Act fiscal recovery funds and is charged with ensuring that such funds are expended in accordance with state and federal law. Whereas under the final rule published by the United States Department of Treasury dated January sixth, two thousand twenty-two, the county had the option to designate a standard allowance of two million, ten million of its ARPA funds to not exceed the county's total ARPA funds award of two million eight hundred ninety-six thousand and ninety-three dollars revenue placement. And whereas the final rule provides that the designation of this standard allowance is a one-time irrevocable election that must be made for the period of performance of the ARPA fund award. And whereas the county has duly made this election and designated its entire ARPA fund award as revenue replacement funds. And whereas the county may expend revenue replacement funds for government services. And whereas the Cleveland County Commission has determined that there is, there's a need to provide pay-go construction and maintenance services to ensure the safety and accessibility of county roadways. Whereas the commission has further determined it is within the authority of the county to provide these government services. And whereas the county commission has determined that providing these services is a necessary, reasonable, proportionate measure to facilitate the provision of these government services. Now therefore be resolved by the commission as follows. The county shall conditionally allocate up to four hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and two dollars and fifty-five cents to be expended for pay-go construction as the maintenance on county road three. The final, um, allocation and expenditure of these funds for the project are contingent upon compliance with state and federal requirements for the procurement of goods and services for the project that are funded in whole or in part with ARPA funds, including federal requirements for competitive procurement of professional engineering and architectural services. All bid documents and contracts awarded for the project shall include its term and conditions to provision of attachment aid to this resolution. If other funding sources are used to complete the project, ARPA funds expended for the project shall be separately tracked and accounted for. Expenditures of revenue replacement funds as authorized by this res- resolution is further contingent on the continued appropriation of availability of ARPA revenue replacement funds for this purpose and shall no event, shall be used, and in no event shall be used for the any expenses not obligated by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four and expended by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. I'm gonna check motions. Mr. Henderson, second, this cop, she made the original. Any discussions?
Oh, like I said, we, we gotta cut, you have the cost.
I do not, because the only thing I have to go off with with my end of things, which right now I'm not providing accurate cost. Uh, the way the whole money is set up, it has to be visited as a project and has to be bid out, which is what this is, this is doing. Now, once we, you know, we bid it out, we bid it out whenever, and once it is bid out, it comes back with a number that, that we can't live with, we're still not obligated to, to anything. If it must, must be a back, it's money we can check and then we can reject all of it.
Okay, yeah, sounds good.
Now, one thing she did say is, is that, say this much money here, if you got, I'm just using the number of two miles of road. Well, if you, if you wanna spend that four hundred and something thousand dollars up to the mailbox, then that's what you're, but it can all go into the budget, you can add more money to it. But if you just say if you wanna go and do half the road with the four hundred thousand, then that's what you can do the next, and you can sign off on it there and you can do the rest of the road in a later time. But I think, I don't think you can go down through there and, and do patch or burn, or you gotta go to a stop and go on the ground.
Well, as long as you, as long as you put it in a plan and you work that plan.
Work the plan whether it's just getting ready for.
Whether it's patching level or whether it's research.
Okay.
As long as, as long as, as long as you bid out what the, what the project is supposed to be.
Okay.
This took the road, it's not a complete research, it's got a bad street.
Well, then you would be good to put that money in.
Good, yeah.
If that's what he's putting in the project, that's what she explained to us.
This is the district four, alright?
Right.
Alright, any other questions or discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion cares unanimously. Um, new business out of D.
I'd make a motion with two ways, but really, joking about.
Yeah, does it need to be voted on like that, motion?
Yes.
With, and in D, in a second, okay? We got a motion in a second to, um, to what?
To waive the reading.
To waive the reading. Any discussion on that?
Just like to announce that what road it is, simply run now.
The, the, uh, the road number.
One thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
I mean thirty-five.
County road thirty-five. We accept it at that. All in favor of voting, say aye.
Aye.
Motion cares.
Motion to approve. Yeah. Motion for approval.
Is that your motion to approve thirty-five?
I second.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I know y'all were here to read that, thank y'all. It's painful, isn't it? It's painful. Alright, we move on to, uh, everything, everything was identical except the road. Um, new business I made, whereas, uh, Cleveland County Commission had previously tasked the sheriff's department to obtain bids for vehicle maintenance for their department. Whereas the commission has reconsidered having the sheriff department obtain the bids. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission resolves to have the commission office prepare to bid the package for the maintenance of sheriff's department vehicles only. I'm gonna vote. Mr. Henderson, next. Motion be.
I'd like it.
Mr. Henderson, next. Second. Any discussion?
I'd like to amidge it to say that, uh, sheriff's department will provide specs.
You okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Amendment. You got that in line? Any other discussion of that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion cares unanimously. New business out of F, whereas the Cleveland County Commission has received a letter of request from the Alabama Retired State Employees Association, Alabama Public Employees Advocacy League. Whereas the request is for a one-time longevity bonus to their retirees. Whereas the estimated cost of the bonus for the Cleveland County Commission retirees is fourteen thousand dollars and, fourteen thousand and ninety-four dollars. Therefore, the Cleveland, Cleveland County Commission, uh, does not wish to grant this bonus. Do we have a motion? Now, the way that read, it says do, does not wish to grant this bonus. So, was that your intention? I mean.
I was intending that the commission didn't want to.
I think that the, the original motion was to put it on there and then it, it might die of the lack of emotion.
Yeah, the more normal.
Okay, let me, let me, let me, let me do this, um. I think there was an error and me being chairman, I think I understood the resolution should, should have said, does wish to grant this bonus.
I admit if there's no motion.
Subtract the word not. And me being chairman, I think, as far as that should be in the resolution, I think it's just a misunderstanding. That's the way I understood it should be, okay? So I'll entertain a motion to pass this.
Which would give a bonus.
Which would give a bonus. It dies for lack of motion. Okay, I have several things I'd like to consider. Adding, um, to the agenda. Let's see, this would be, um, G. Proclamation, I actually add this to the agenda, we wrote on amateur radio in Cleveland County, June twentieth through twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. Whereas amateur radio operators are celebrating over a century of the miracle of the human voice broadcast over the airwaves. And whereas amateur radio has continued to provide a bridge between people, peoples, societies, and countries by creating friendships and sharing of ideas. And whereas amateur radio operators have also provided countless hours of community service, both in its emergencies and to other local organizations throughout these decades. Whereas these amateur radio services are provided wholly uncompensated. And whereas the county office though recognizes the services amateur radio, radios people also provide to our, our many emergency response organizations, including EMA, EMS, fire, and rescue. And whereas these same individuals have further demonstrated their value in public assistance by providing free radio communications for local parades, bike-a-thons, walk-a-thons, fairs, and other charitable public events. And whereas the county Cleveland of the state of Alabama recognizes and appreciates the diligence of these hands who also serves as weather spotters in the Skyline Program of the National Weather Service. And whereas the ARRL is the leading organization for amateur radio in the USA. And whereas the ARRL Amateur Radio Field Day Exercise will take place on June twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two and it's, and it is a twenty-four hour emergency preparedness exercise and demonstration of the radio amateur skills and readiness to provide self-supporting communications without further infrastructure being required. Now, um, therefore, I Ron Robertson, Project Judge of Cleveland County, Alabama, and I would say we might wanna change that and send the Cleveland County Commission to hereby officially recognize and designate June twenty twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two as Amateur Radio Week in Cleveland County, Alabama.
Make that motion.
I second it.
Okay. Can we make that an amendment there that I would, I don't know, I think they sent that, I thought they should have sent. They meant to say Cleveland County Commission.
Look, this is all part of the source.
You got that? Sorry, just wanna make sure. So, I'm sorry, who made the motion?
This, large staff here.
And this one, say, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The, the next one would be, um, eight, right? House, oh, I mean, Ms., um, Debbie Matthews is retiring this month, and I think some of y'all that live there have us quietly having a secret, uh, surprise party for her. But, um, her husband asked if we could do something, I think the House of Representatives did something. But, um, so whereas, um, Debbie Matthews after, um, has served with the Alabama Cooperative Extension System in, uh, Cleveland County Extension Office. June the thirtieth, um, whereas she, Ms. Matthews has served as NEAFC, you're gonna have to rewrite this, National President, Alabama President, Leadership Experience Committee, Endowment Committee, and was awarded Distinguished Service Award. Whereas Ms. Matthews has been tremendously involved in the community, serving the following organizations. Joint Council of Extension Professional Board of Directors, Members, Leadership Cleveland County Coordinator for sixteen years, since the first class in two thousand six, Senate District Thirteen, Leadership Plenty Grant Team and Trainer, Big Stream Inside-Nout Coordinator since two thousand nine, Cleveland County Nutrition and Health Council Coordinator, Community Nutrition Preceptor for JSU, Central University and Oakwood University Diet, um, Dietics Interns at JSU, Human Sciences Advisory Committee, David Matthews Center Advisory Committee, Heffernar Arts Council Drama Committee, Chihaw Master Garden Association, Cleveland County DHR Quality Assurance Committee, Cleveland County Children's Policy Council, County of Cleveland Habitat for Humanity, Alabama Extension Strategic Planning Committee, two thousand twenty-one, one of thirty-six selected, Your Town, uh, Alana, founding member of Alabama Sunrise Region, Alabama Radon Program Agent of the Year, two thousand three, Cass Board Directors, Camp Aska, Easther Seale Board Members. Whereas Ms. Matthews active in her church, part of a moral Baptist, and a Sunday School teacher, serving on the committees as a member of the choir ensemble. Where therefore, uh, the Cleveland County Commission would, um, how would we word that? Recognize Ms., um, Debbie Matthews' service and dedication to her community, congratulate her on her retirement. Can I, I'll entertain, we need to add this to the agenda.
Make a motion where to the agenda.
I second it.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, adding it?
Can we also do a plaque if I did become term next meeting?
Um, we could do something, now, understand that we have to, we can't take it out of funding, can't. We have to all work together.
A donation for you to, to get a plaque, because she's done so much for this county.
You can go forward with passing the resolution if you choose to follow it up with a plaque, your commission will be there.
Now, we added the, we didn't vote on the last one, did we? We just added it.
You didn't vote to add it, you just voted on it.
Okay, we needed to add it to. Um, so we're adding this, all in favor adding this to, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, motion to pass this.
Motion to be passed.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I'll work on getting something. But we'll also have something like that. Alright, how do we fix what we just did, because I got hurried.
Just a motion to retroactive.
I'll entertain a motion to rec, uh, thank you. Retroactively, I'm, my tone is wearing, wearing out. And, uh, the motion that we passed.
You've been, I'm working on something.
I have.
I second.
Who made the motion? You made it?
Well, Chris.
Make the motion, say it. What happened?
I was trying to hit the, uh.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate it, I just realized I did that, I made a mistake. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So we added it and it was passed. Uh, next, this came in a little bit late, but, um, was the, um, I think it came in the next day after our work session, State of Alabama Alcohol, Alcoholic Beverage Control Board, a Chihaw Package Store, uh, is asking, Chihaw is asking for this to be passed. But y'all had to put this on the agenda.
Make a motion to put it on the agenda.
You second it.
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now to pass it.
I make a motion to pass it.
I second it.
Any discussion? I think it's your district, right?
Right.
This thing has already passed.
And then on the paperwork. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion cares. The last thing, I don't, we mentioned earlier, did y'all wanna add something to the? The last thing, I don't, we mentioned earlier, did y'all want to add something to the, about taking money from each of your discretionary account for DHR?
I have the motion that we, uh, put that on the DMS, uh, that was motion.
Okay. And I don't know what letter we have to.
J.
Thank y'all, that's what y'all are here to help me, we all need a little help sometime.
I'll second that one.
Okay. Any discussion, all in favor, abandon it, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So the motion now is that each of them would take two hundred fifty from your discretionary account to, uh, give to DHR for the, um, supplies that she cannot buy in the state, that she would need a thousand, equal in a thousand dollars each. And who would make the motion, you make that motion, go ahead, second it. Any discussion?
How do we track that, or do we have to track it since it's discretionary?
We track it on, it's pretty cheap.
She's got to turn any invoices or?
As well ask, do we have, do we have to track?
It's being done specifically in response to the request, so the funds when they're given, they can be given, and specifically earmarked to address the requests. If we come out later, they didn't spend it on that, then we report it, we all.
Tell me.
I think she'll spend it on that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Have we covered everything, did we leave anything out?
I have to forget the other thing, I don't know if I don't know what it is.
Now, let everybody know that, uh. Next Tuesday's, uh, Election Day, and everything's going smoothly, um, working on the, the testing the machines, they didn't come in and speak to me today, so, but everything's going good there, then we choose to, uh, just want to encourage people to go out and vote, if, I don't know if that can be put on the, our website or anything, just encourage people to vote, remind them.
You know, we're getting a little house, right?
Yeah, we get everything back before I say.
Well, I'm ensuring, get out and vote too, on my, first of all.
Out of, um, a little over eleven thousand voters that are registered, I'm not saying they're all live, but we have a little over eleven thousand registered voters.
You know that some are dead, so.
So, uh, we only had thirty-seven hundred to vote.
Yeah, we kind of had twenty-two percent.
No, we only had, uh, we had thirty-four percent.
Yeah, we, we did.
So, and most time we're a house, hard to get votes to come back, so.
It was surprising, particularly the show selections that were in front.
Right. We do, uh, nobody did vote. Nobody did vote, that's what you're trying, it didn't look, didn't sound like I did. But we do have eleven thousand registered voters.
You have anything else?
Uh, you have anything?
Yes, um, we've had attorney branch staff here in the office, uh, Emma Williams will be our finance partner now, so POs and invoices and everything will go with her, and we will be advertising for our commission for the position, uh, in, in the coming week or so, we'll have that, uh, advertised, and we'll do the area process all over again and fill that position. Uh, and there are some, there are some requirements that she's got about education and that kind of thing, we're taking care of all of that, so, um, she's been doing a fine job, she's already been doing it for a couple of weeks, and she should sit ready and took over and is doing a great job. All right, and.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, and, um, also, um, want to let you know, until we, I've talked to it, until we have not, uh, the second tranche of our ARCA funds was deposited last Thursday, so all of our ARCA money is now in our account for that money. It's just good to know that it's there, that we've got all that money. Um, state ARCA money was also, um, received yesterday, this, that inmate, you may be familiar with that, it's twenty-two thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars and fifteen cents for the portion that they figured that, they did, based on a formula, that Cleveland County should receive for housing, estate and inmates. We got that yesterday, right? And that can directly be taken into our general fund and can directly be spent, um, however, because they, they look at office, they're really personally asked for money that has already been spent, okay? Um, there's going to be some, a little bit issue with it later with the examiner's, not this year, obviously, for this audit, but there will be, and it, it's going to be a little bit of a task just to try to get something kind of, I think they're not going to hold us to go to the letter as far as what the examiner's office is saying, that they're, or just basically going to want a statement saying, you know, this is the, was the situation at the time, and that we did spend the money on things for the jail for inmates, and it's going to be something real, real simple like that. I fully expect that they'll actually have a plan for that by the time we get to that point. Um, also, uh, the opioid deal continues the saga of the opioid claims, um, we did another affidavit today, so, it's, you know, we think we're going to get money, then they ask for something else, and then they ask for something else, and they just go like, delay, delay, and that's, that's where we're at on that. Um, I traveled to the ACAA, um, conferences in the Gulf Shores, and it also, and it also had, um, it was a very educational, great thing, I was seeing that with us, I mean, it's, it was all good, except for cyber, cybersecurity, that section was terrible, and they apologized to us for that, but other than that, it was a very, it was a very good two days of a lot of information. Um, Mr. Roger and I went both to, um, Creighton last week and did a class on, and I keep saying it wrong, so we'll look at it, legislative and young miller relations. Um, that was a, that was a little bit more to the door, but it was a good class, and you make good contacts when you go to these classes because, you know, Sonny Brexwell's there, and, you know, your, your, your legal team's there, so you can ask a lot of questions further there, and I think that's all I have for you.
One of the, one of the things, which, too, the place we was in, that kid standing out in the middle, they was talking about audits coming up in this year, and they presented or focused in on payroll, uh, and, uh, on, uh, and, did you ever get any idea of exactly what they're going to be looking in on documented payroll?
I don't think that it's going to be that different than what they've done in the past, I think they're, they're realizing that that payroll is always, is always, that this is just a chance that there's going to be fraud there, so they really did focus on payroll items. Um, I would say anything, maybe they're going to pick a larger selection percentage of your employees that they actually check their files and make sure that, you know, we're following to the letter, anything to do with, uh, everything from how much taxes we pay, to making sure that all of our files are updated on what we're sending in to the IRS, to those, those types of things are what they're going to be checking on, so, and, and that's normal, I would just say they're probably going to step up the amount of those this time.
Lee? Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought she was taking a session, that's, uh, on the audits for this year that y'all were working on, I think the commission has a holdups to hear, where you're at on that.
It's, um, we're down to the last little tiny details of having this done. I talked to Melissa again today, and she will be coming Friday afternoon, I mean, she's spoken that it might take us an hour to get the last little bit of details that she needs from me, and she was saying next week, it looks like she'll have to finish.
They didn't peruse it.
Being in the dead horse. It will be fine, we're, we're perfectly fine as far as, the, the auditors are all so tied up right now that even when we tell them we're ready to audit, it's not like they're going to hop down through the next phase for auditing. She said they're right here right now and will be in good shape, because there's so much that we've already got completed, that they didn't start on this, a lot of it already, but just to, just to have everything in place, she wants to come in, in, on Friday, I will think that she's going to have everything, the final bits of it all entered into our spreadsheets, and we'll basically just make it firm to make sure we agree that this is how this should be presented, and we'll have, uh, our notes that go with audit to work on, and it, it will be done.
And you're sort of more comfortable with it, with everything, picking it up, being able to, I'll probably show you some of the things.
And she didn't just take over and start doing everything, she took over, found areas that we needed to work on, and then she called me and said, we need these reports because this doesn't look right, or that doesn't look right, so I've been taking that stuff crazy, and, um, I fully expect that I could probably do it myself next year, I, I would still confirm with her, I think we should, I think it's a good, I could continue to get a little help for a little while, but we'll see how that goes before next year, or what changes happen before next year, and part of that is because gasey changes every single year, there are always changing, how little things are recorded, um, even throughout the year, you're in contact with the examiner's office because they, they change how little things done, but, um, I'm going to be much more comfortable with this year, and I really did do a full, minimum amount of work before she ever took over, which is why she's only charging us a small rate that she's charged us, because a lot of the, like, grunt work part of it was already done. She's been coming back to me and getting really more work on spreadsheets, on, on different assets, on different things, as we've gone, and that's been good, it's been good, it's been interactive.
Get somebody qualified as he is to look over your stuff, the little, depending on something that's always good, because we're talking, you know, twenty-five, thirty years of experience, plus the one that we lost was trained by her over fifteen years, I think it was, so, and she's always been there, and I think, you're a bit surprised how many times she's had that in her past, yes, she's always a punk all the way, so.
And before we even started this, before we even started the financials, I had a call on her, you know, I would just email her, I have a question about this, I don't really know what this is about, or whatever, and she just emailed me back, and she's not charging for that, that's, and she said, I don't want to charge you anything for, for that part of the time, I had someone train me, and this is part of giving back for that information that I learned, so, she's really good, and she's been a great asset throughout this year.
Any other questions? Lee? I'm sorry. Do you, do you need a grant writer?
I have not never looked at a grant writer that's stupid, anybody, I've been trying, I've been talking to other people, they do, they sell it, or they use community consultants.
Are they doing a lot of pressure, are they doing a lot of pressure?
She does do a lot of this. She sure does. And I've done a little grant writer myself, I haven't done anything massive, I've done small grants before, you know, a lot of the small grants are pretty much kind of guaranteed to be the different kind of men, I've done a lot of those, but I've not done any real people's.
Can you list out them on the post?
It's tough, it really is, I mean, they're just, there's just so much chartered there that it's, it's made really hard, but it's rough, I mean, we don't have anybody, that's what we have to do.
All right, uh, I know in the next few months, we've got to determine the bank for the upcoming year. Okay, the least likely is the law where we can actually draw interest off of our money. I would like for our administrator to get one of our local bankers to come up here and sit down and give us some options about what we could do with some of this money, because even if you make a half percent on these dollars, that's about, uh, and we got some CDs, I actually remember when those CDs are coming due, so we've got the rain day fund, and possibly we could either do the general fund, but we need to sit down with somebody that knows, uh, because there's a little bit of money to help.
But you did the general fund, you were rotating so much.
You can do, uh, uh.
I mean, if you've got so much in your account, you'll get our interest, but it's got to stay within a percentage.
You can say that, my mind is going blank, uh, money work account, you can do a money work account, you can write checks, you can put money in, take money out, or whatever you want, but we need, we need somebody that knows more about how to, to give us some tips or what we can do, because, I mean, if we make ten, ten, fifteen thousand dollars a year, ten, fifteen thousand bucks a year, and right now, I think, I'm going to round these numbers off, but we gave you this number, we got about five hundred and forty thousand in CDs, and we got about one point four in the rain day fund, so we got roughly two million dollars sitting there, just in case emergencies, so I know we could do something with that.
Just that one, we'll set it to yours.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just going to say, we need to talk to the banker, see if the FDIC is sure, and see, you know.
Do it, do that.
Yeah. And then, and the CD deal, I think it'd probably be better off with money work than that CD, with the rates are now, with the special book.
It's something that has to be done every year anyway, with the harvest bank, so just, we're correct.
But you can track a couple of little work sessions, these days.
Which, yes, yes. Sitting there with administrator, or if they want to do a work session anyway, it don't matter, I mean, I'd like to sit in.
Well, if it was to ask, uh, District Free Commissioner and, uh, the administrator to sit down on it, then they both can come and, that's how you do the night, you take schedule.
I mean, I, you know, I just think, don't need to sit there.
No, you're allowed.
Uh, and since they did pass that law, we're allowed to do that, so, we can't do the ARCA ones, no, we can't.
I appreciate you coming up with it here.
Uh, I just want District Free to have money.
For, for handling.
We'll vote on that one after we get it.
The orders still, I guess we'll wait.
But that, that, that must mention that girl still, you just want to talk about it?
Well, and we got a discussion, I'm with any of them, all right, all right. Ms. R, Ms. R, Lee, all right.
I'm ready.
Go, Lee.
And I'm going to tell you, a lot of this I may have talked about at the work session, but wasn't able to, um, that's enough. Nothing I need right now, just something for y'all to consider, this is the, uh, state bill for a chip spreader, um, it's kind of missing, I think we have, I thought we had operation of the month, we don't know if we're using, and I didn't say before, but it's fixed together.
Did the welder find you today?
We didn't, today.
He was the first, he was trying to find, find the candy bar today, I said, you only like about fifty more feet and you'll be right in the middle of it.
He, uh, didn't realize, come back today.
Yeah, he says, y'all want me to weld something else?
Can I tell you what he said, he was bringing to his house for evidence that, uh, he's not going to test it all, he's going to.
But anyway, so he had, we had to have a welder come out and do some, do some welding on it, um, currently the warmer gas, and I didn't say before, moderate, it's not variable width anymore, all on big skin, but, um, it's got a lot of issues, this right here is a large amount of money, it's three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, it's, it's a big purchase, um, I was going to pose using some of our money to do it, so I'll pay some money for it, but we'll tell you it's something that we would, key for its lifespan, um, but anyway, just for y'all's consideration, um, I had a few notes on my track desk that I just wanted to clarify, totally big garbage, um, we're having a lot of issues with garbage.
You're moving off equipment right now, right? We're stopped. Uh, on equipment, don't you, are you paying into the county now where you bought, with about one piece of equipment, were you in on that?
I don't know exactly where I'm at, but yes, I am paying back the, uh, what, what will be decided, so that will proceed.
And we're paying on our act.
I've done all city too. There's a couple of trees growing that she can't see that.
So, uh, can you look at that and see what else in that? Okay, now you go on to that, I'm excited, I'm excited.
Is this? Are you going to be able to do what you got planned this summer, with what you got?
We will, it's, it's just not as efficient as it is today.
Well, you might.
And I'm going to give you a four instance, if we're doing fourteen foot wide over, we're going to make a ten foot pass, and we've got another ten foot pass to cover that little four foot, so we're, we're wasting some stock on it, we tried to go back sweep today to pick it back up, but, you know, variable width, we could make that in one pass, so. But yeah, I mean, yes, we're gonna, we're gonna get through this, this summer.
Can you, can you rent one for thirty days?
You can't do it five days. They uh, it's not, it's not gonna get out until you just sit out there.
It's kinda like that side launch.
Side launch, it's like a side.
Don't ask that question.
So this, so this, this is just to rattle down and throw it, push down the taller, right?
So it puts tall down and you got to back it to this and build up the roof and keep it continuous flow as you're going down the road. Plus, it's about you, right?
Well, it's funny what your credit rating is.
Not really. garbage. So we're having a lot of issue with garbage. It boils down to drivers. It boils down to, we can't get cans. We've got residents that's waiting months for cans. Um, so I made a few files. I also contacted, I was managing with one of them, the public, AMC, Arrow, um, Patriot, I mean, GFL. So we contacted six old companies just to see if there was any interest in bidding and what they would have to see in a bid. And pretty much unanimous across the board was they wanted it tied to a few indexes and consumer price indexes. Um, so essentially that would give us a longer contract because each year they're gonna look at these indexes and they're gonna get in the threat. Um, found a couple of comparative bids here recently that ranged anywhere from eighty-one dollars to over eighty-seven dollars. Um, in talking with these companies, I'm hearing the same issue that we're having with how drivers can't get cans. I'm really, I'm hearing the same story over and over. Um, so I don't know that we're weaning away the offer really at this point. I think we're kinda in the same situation just to play another part. Um, we've got one more year on this contract that's set out next October. Um, so we've got some other options to make the bid up to that, if not, about this time next year, we'll be looking at bids up.
And I'll go right with those things and we're gonna have some hard swing on that.
I think it was a county company just to bid an increase on theirs.
Yeah.
Maybe this government commission just had to increase theirs and.
I was supposed to say.
Fifteen dollars extra.
So you're gonna do a hundred and thirty dollars.
It's fifteen dollars or not.
And I probably won't can do this. Actually, just get rid of theirs. It's not gonna go over there. Not gonna be able to do it. There's a, there's a, they put it out there as an idea.
What happens to all of that?
And they record them.
This is what I brought sort of next, last week evening, that we need to discuss some, some more options. Like in-house or the, or dumpsters or, I mean, if we're gonna do something, we need to start it this summer. And if we're not, if we don't have something in place or started and processed by the first of the year, then we're at the mercy of whatever the company says. If anybody that, wanna even discuss anything else.
Right, I was just, I mean, we've, we've had, we've always got three or four bids from the different companies. I don't think we've been like this, the county we're talking about. We've got bids.
And they, and those are topics we're willing to submit.
They're, so it's not like we're gonna be without somebody. The fact is, it's gonna cost the residents money. But everything else is costing the residents too. It's not just garbage. Everything out there is the cops just don't know. But for us to, to start trying to do our own garbage, no, I don't think we're gonna do that. I don't think we're willing to do that. Or for us to have a, a robot or a machine that would take the garbage, that's never gonna work. Cause I've got a lot of people that are older residents, they can't do that. And I wouldn't expect them to.
What's gonna happen in Green County, you know, in Miami?
They, they will.
The other one? I know, I think my neighbor would be coming together and do something like, you know, our own. You know, what people have tried to plan to do on the side that we got the only one. But then you've got so many people who just burn it and throw it away. Make the way out and do it, right?
I think it's, we already have issues with, I mean, you just had a resident, one of the folks, rather becomes illegal dumping.
Right.
But it, it's kind of, you know, I think we've got, what, how's that case going? Have you heard anything from me yet? Is that we started making a stamp while this week because dumping is a huge issue. And neither garbage can.
There's some, there's some, it's not an Alabama, it's, it's Georgia, a Georgia rule or a law. But uh, talking about burning, there's, there's some in Georgia that's basically saying if you're not a good company property owner, that you are about to burn certain stuff. There's some legis, uh, regulations, you know, around the country that, that allow some different options. And but once you get in a town, an populated area, the side to side, it really boils down to sometimes that we kick out. So.
And they're paying five, six dollars a gallon of diesel. Yeah, we knew this was gonna happen. And I can't believe that the residents don't realize that it's gonna happen. I mean, you can't drive these big trucks all over the county and three times as much as they're paying for diesel.
Extra a pound, a half, thirty gallons a day.
And if he say, how does he get this, you know, we talked about, I wonder if, if we could get to the latest load about that then, since they're working in a county, would that be a way that they qualify for, like where we get our parts at or the?
What's the part? I mean, they have a fleet car.
They do?
But it's, I mean, it's actually paying a tax.
There might be something that we might have to look at with Randy, see if there's something that they can.
That, if they were working within our channel, maybe.
Or I, I would say you can stay down.
Maybe you can, yeah.
I'm pretty much on the go with Randy. That's something I would know that would ease some of their pain, which it's nothing that we's, it's gonna ease what, twenty-six cents?
And I know the county, Calhoun County, what they're doing, they're doing theirs as if the, if the fuel goes down, then the price drops down.
Yeah, so that's. I think that's something we can do and hopefully, probably if something happens in Washington DC in just a year.
Really well?
Yes.
What, what'd you say the, that bid was?
That it was two of them and one was eighty-one dollars for, the other one was eighty-seven for.
Yeah, but by next year after we go through a session and all that, basically ten dollars to go, it's gonna be a hundred dollars. I, I'm just throwing it out there.
Those, those are.
Hey, when it go, when it goes things by dollars, then you gonna have a good week to talk.
If you buy, if you got, you might be eating all that trash that gets that high, but I don't think you guys gonna be able to afford to buy groceries to throw any waste away. People gonna stand out in the patch and garden their cows.
Uh, next note I was talking about water sheds and I sent Sonny a package with all those contracts on it and some examples of the inspections that everyone has to sign off on. Haven't had any response from him, but I still got a message to speak to. I'm gonna be seeing some.
I thought you said after the meeting started, you said, "Honey, we're good for us." But, but that's not.
Um, the next note, I'm gonna talk about walking trail. I agree with just me, you know, but that's, see, the three dollars, one, 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 good maintenance. I should keep that in my, in my front ledger. Um, and then the business license deal. I kinda helped. All right, a bunch back from going to check and waiting on kind of some clarification. Are we buried or are we?
I, I spoke, I mean, I, I spoke with it. I've sent emails, sent all y'all, you know. I think it's obvious that, that they have to.
I agree.
You don't, you don't see any documentation. I sent you a same. I sent you a clip, you know. Um, his only comment was, is he wanted to get clarification from, I believe, municipalities, but I don't know that he's bought through with that. You know, we had ten years on our eyes to go back and make it again.
But it's not a private, private officer or them go around and check and see and then have the, uh, run up a copy of the laws that you gotta have a state and county license.
At least on a, uh, that, that list. It says it in there. I mean.
It does.
It's actually, I mean, probably almost six, seven, eight or eight. Eighty-five, we miss college, it's not actually something they, I would say there's probably, it's just a sticker or a line and shut down.
So, so long the.
Has Lola's been out for a long time? For us to click, so does that help then?
Every twenty days?
So they're paying the tax, but they don't have a license. So that's a little stupid if they're paying the tax and they don't have a license. They're weak, I mean.
They're blocking the tax though, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
It's a little, it's a little sorry.
So, uh, just going back to yours about the, the water shed, so the attorney just contacted Steve Brer.
Correct.
I was done. When they got finished.
Are y'all ready?
Follow on two things. The affidavit I've got, the affidavit that you're up to with. I'll get that notarized and send it back in to my office and all the water sheds. Craig Diller with Webber Lee or whatever their firm's name is. Craig called me on Friday, said he had gotten a task from Sonny to verify what we sent and wanted some background information. And I basically told him what we had been going through, what we had found so far, uh, the documentation that he had. And also that I've been dealing with this on my, Randall County, around the Crystal Lake. Um, but he just wanted some of that information. He said that they were meeting yesterday and I think again tomorrow, uh, and that he may pull me back in to work on some of this. But until he and Sonny sat down and got a plan to go, then he was done. I mean, I told Craig that the way I saw it was, since this was, these are locations on private property, the county can't spend money on private property, that originally all these were, were passed through grant type arrangements where the federal government spent money and we were just the agency that it came down through. But we don't hold any long-term maintenance, ownership, et cetera. And that was the position that I expressed to Craig.
What I talked to Sonny about too was, was Lola's, you sat down there and he was telling me, "Well, I didn't have a lot of money." And I said, "Well, that's not the problem. The problem is, they're talking about in the future about dredging and valves and they're talking, in one case, hundreds of meters of water."
Yeah, well, in Crystal Lake, Randall County was presented with a two point four million dollar dam replacement. That's.
That meeting that I went to, they said between two, two hundred mill for dredging and valves and pipe and, you know. We just gotta go wash, fill it with wash. I think that's one thing, but.
It's still looking. I fought suit on the half of Randall County against the Roanoke City Water Board because the water board is the one who the property is in their name. And the water board has been receiving all of the profit from selling the water and fishing licenses, et cetera. But they're expecting the county to pay for maintenance and the county said no. And the ultimate answer is, once we get USDA approval of land, uh, the water board is gonna take full ownership and that's responsible. And I think when I brought up the issue that we would, on the half of Randall County, we expected to pay back all the money that we've collected over the last fifty years, that's the decision. We don't have any luck with that.
Let me ask you a question. Since we're responsible for like Golden Lake and all that according to, so-called make the word, can we consider for something? That happened, that accident happened up there?
Well, we're not the property owner.
I know, we're not the owners, so we're, we're just maintenance. We're just dealing with maintenance.
So unless we did something that was, you know, negligent or one with regard to maintenance, such as, you know, we were supposed to repair a fence and we didn't, or we were supposed to fix something and did it and shot it in or someone got injured, that they could tie it directly to something we did or failed to do, that would be our liability. But with regard to just property ownership, we don't.
Well, that's what we're saying. Not coming later.
Oh, right.
Sweetwater High Rock in the morning.
Okay. But all of them, both.
Yeah, sweet, yeah, Sweetwater High Rock.
Yeah, you can go in Sweetwater, but you gotta get some top ones.
Now, Sweetwater is all on federal land.
Federal land. I like this too. Like I said, I can't remember the name of the lake, but I know the one on more of the red temperature, but it's, it's in the national park.
Anything else? Any other questions? Discussion items or congratulate, uh, John, congratulations to you and or condolences?
Yeah.
Um, any other discussion items? It's calm, it's scary.
I know we got, we're getting a list of electrician units at the forehouse and matching them up to each office and getting how old each one of them is. Cause did, did we replace yours not long ago?
I, I can't remember. You said like this.
When I say not long ago, I'm talking like ten years.
I thought it was less than five years ago.
My bad. But we're gonna get the dates up all of them and then we'll put the number and we're getting the drawings that we have together with the lady or whoever, we're gonna do that. So I guess we're still looking at taking some of that money and putting it towards our additional support out. I mean, I just, I stood close, okay. Well, we'll get another edition with that four by four down. I mean, I'll, I'll be glad to use some of all of them.
I, I got another question. You said, uh, would the bunch collect your sales tax? We got two contracts coming up. One of them, one of them. Was it made fast, something like that?
One of them, I think is actually already up, but they'll continue until, they're, they're not continuing business expenses. They'll continue on. I think the other one is actually up. I think in July. So that's, yeah, pretty quick.
We need your.
Let me ask you this. Have you reached out to, uh, Alabama Department of Revenue and, and tried to negotiate and saying, well, this is what, this is what avenue will do? Can you do, that's the same thing as boys, the cars?
I have not recently reached out to them. I have talked to them in the past when I worked in a previous job and talked with them about what they charge and there's, it is complex.
But I think they were versatile because I just talked to someone that just basically that's what they'll do. And they said, "If you were waiting what, this avenue is paying more magic."
Let me, let me say this. What is the percentage of what these folks related to here now come in? What's the percent, I mean, what is the percentage is we feel like we're only talking one or two problems or we're talking a major problem, but do you think we're not gonna have problems with a new company comes in? It will still don't have.
A new company, not a new company. It's just a state of.
So.
Kevin, he's seen a letter from the Alabama Department of Revenue. He makes a lot more than a letter from heaven. I mean, that's, that's.
And the reason people use this avenue is because it is cheaper. But my thing is, have you approached the Department of Revenue and said, "Well, can you match this?" If you, if you would like the ridge off to the draw, I can do that.
Is it a contract with them also or it's just a service?
I don't think it's probably a contract also.
And it's either a contract or a governmental service. Can, can you come up with something else?
I'm starting to draw.
Anything else?
I might notice we go home. So, Jerry.
All favor of Jerry's.